Well, um, you know, like I guess what like I was saying a bit earlier, you know, I I think it's important for us to acknowledge all the effort. Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I recommend that you allow any members of the public who wanted to comment, uh, who are not applicants.
Okay, prior to discussion?
Yes.
Okay, well, with that said, I'll go ahead and take that recommendation, so, um, I guess the public hearing is now open for anyone, any resident or anyone who's in the room, if you may, please step up to the, uh, the microphone. Please state your name and your address, and if there's a particular organization that you'd like to highlight or or bring up, feel free to speak upon it, and if you may do so within the allotted three-minute time.
I'll take sixty seconds. Good evening, my name is Metris Batscoli, my address is eighteen eighty-five northeast one hundred and twenty-fifth street.
Good evening.
I am a proud resident of the city of North Miami, and I was the consultant that was brought in to facilitate the workshop for this opportunity, and I want to say that I am proud of the people that showed up. There was forty-five people in that room that day, and a lot of them had never ever thought about writing a grant. I do appreciate the opportunity that I was afforded to be able to provide capacity building technical assistance. Other than the CBD block grant, nonprofit organizations need more funding. I think will be a great opportunity for the city of North Miami to explore capacity building and technical assistance for nonprofit organizations. The nonprofit industry is nine hundred billion dollars a year. You have a lot of organizations who are dedicated to working in the city of North Miami, and I think there's a way with effective partnerships to make sure that you can provide the capacity building and technical assistance so they can transition from the community block grant, which is only fifteen percent, and position themselves to apply for other programming, which is what we discussed in class, right? He said that this would be an opportunity to get their foot in the door, understand evidence-based evaluation, income, impact studies, and demographics. So, thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to more opportunities.
Alright, great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
No, I mean, I I think, uh, I think, I think it seems like I keep hearing repeated of how great this workshop is. So, thank you for, I think that's a testament for your efforts as well as a professional and a consultant, so, thank you for that.
Thank you to the staff that, um, we met and we talked at a city of North Miami event earlier in the year. So, we had been talking about it and planning about it and working with Marie and Peggy. Um, we included pre and post evaluations for future opportunities to expand whatever you would be able to do in the community.
Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public that would like to come up and give their comment? I, uh, don't think there is, so, with that being said, our public hearing is now closed, and we'll open up the, um, I guess we'll open up the table for discussion as to how, excuse me? Yeah, discussion is, is to add to, you know, I guess the amount that's being recommend- recommended. Um, again, just to remind everyone that we are limited to the overall amount, um, which is ninety thousand dollars to, uh, you know, allocate staffers, put together this list of what they feel is the best representation based on the information that was submitted by the applicants, um, and I guess their brief due diligence as well, so, but, you know, uh, and the commission, we do have the the right or the powers to reallocate if that's something that, um, anyone on the commission would like to entertain. Um, you know, I guess, go ahead and propose, I will start with you, Bob, I mean, on your end.
Let me start with, I'm, I'm, I've been on the board of a not-for-profit for the last twenty years, and I've been president of the board of directors for the last ten. And I'm very sympathetic to not-for-profit organizations, and it's, it's hard to find a bad one. There are some, because the causes are great and the people that work there pour their blood, sweat, and tears into the mission, whatever the cause is. And it's kind of like, I bring, I drop food off at the Humane Society for the dogs, I can't go in. I want to bring them all home, and I just don't have room for all the dogs at the Humane Society every week. Uh, and I would say that, listening to the folks that came up here tonight, you should all be proud of the work you do.
Absolutely.
I mean, there, it's an amazing amount, I, I, it's, I said it, I mean, it's, it's blood, sweat, and tears you pour into it, it's a labor of love. Uh, you're never properly compensated, except in the, in the rewards of the success of your mission. So, we, we have loaves and fishes to divide, and that's kind of the problem with this at this stage of the game. There's, there's so much money and the, the staff recommendations kind of did a stack ranking of everything, and that's, that's one way to do it. I mean, as people, as we look at the each of, each of the causes, each of the missions, each of the, the not-for-profits, each of us gets struck differently. I've got things that move me more than others, and that's just everybody's personal experiences and and biases. I mean, I, I personally, I think financial literacy is an under-taught skill that whenever we can teach it to people, so when they go out into the world, they can figure out how to balance a checkbook. I think the work that the, the Senior Citizen Meals on Wheels does is just fabulous. Um, I mean, I, I don't want to go, I could go down the list, right? I mean, I think everyone that spoke here, everyone that spoke here had a piece of my heart. And I, I, again, I thank you for what you do. Um, how do we divide this up is, how do you look at it? I mean, so the ways you have to look at it are, one, we're, we have limited funds, so you look at those that favor the citizens of the city of North Miami. I mean, you start with there because we can't save, unfortunately, we can't save Miami Beach. Um, but, so, the folks that are dedicated to the residents of our city would probably get my attention more than others. Um, I know as, as our not-for-profit gets judged, the things we can't see of what was presented that I think we would like to see in the, in the future, is, I keep getting asked, how much of the money that we raise goes through to the mission, and how much of it takes care of overhead and program management? And we get, we get judged by that, and I learned some valuable lessons in the process. I don't have any sense of that with any of the groups except one, and again, it was the Meals on Wheels thing, I think they, they, they don't, they're, they're underpaid and 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 the like, so, but that's just, again, my personal biases and preferences, and everybody's got their own. So, I think what I would, would like to do is change the allocation, and I'd have, and I'm, I'm now in the deep end of the pool. I have no recommendations as to what I want to change it to just yet. So, I'd like to hear from everybody else, and then we'll take the swag out of it, I guess.
Well, then I'll go next, because I actually am right with you. Um, so, and because, as I was saying throughout the night, I feel like our hands are tied, and it's not that one is even more deserving, it seems like, than the other, it's, it's, it's that you all are. But, I feel like I am not educated enough on all fifteen of you enough to make an actual decision, to make a vote that I can sleep at night and say, okay, I educated myself enough on this. So, I'm actually going to, um, make a, um, recommendation that we move this vote to the next meeting, if that is possible, I don't know if that's possible with staff, to extend so that we can further, and since staff is here.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know if there's a timing of this has to be, there is, okay. Uh, because again, it's, it's hard to now try to make a decision when these, these organizations are, they're.
What about a recess? Right. Well, let's first, let's first answer the first.
Let me finish my, my, yeah, my point. These, their livelihoods, you know, they're still here, they're, they're concerned, they need a decision, um, and I know that we have, we have to make a decision, but, you know, so I guess, do we just start asking staff? Like, for example, the top question that I have on my head right now is, um, well, I've got several, a lot of them. Um, but, you know, I would like more information on the, like, how you determined who to allocate the funds to and not, so, like, for example, the, the last Community Health Empowerment, uh, they recommend, um, they requested a fifteen thousand dollar grant, and staff is recommending that they are not fund, get any funding. So, it's, I, I would, I guess we need a better explanation from staff to help us be able to cast a vote so we can sleep at night?
The only difference that you do have in front of you tonight is the fact that the panel had the ability, meaning the planning commission had the ability to have the presentation, whereas we did not have any. All of them presented to you what staff went, or the power panel went by, it was presented to us as a package.
Okay.
Whereas you were sold on the services that they are being provided, they are providing to the community, whereas when we were having the workshop, we specifically told them, whatever you presented to us will be what you, who you are.
Okay.
So, if, in, and this is why we brought the grant writer to let you know, the package will represent you. We don't need to see you, whatever you did, whatever you said in your package, this is what represents you. That doesn't mean, um, based on what was presented to us just now, because I've never met a lot of them, because a lot of them are new.
Okay.
That doesn't mean the one that were awarded the most money mean like, mean like they're, they're going to be doing the deliverables like they're supposed to. But the fact that they can pull a compelling package just to sell to the panel, this is what we had to go by.
Okay.
So, yourself, it would be up to you, or it was presented to you, and how you're going to rank them.
Because you did a great job in how you did the, the, um, the information that we have, and that, the research that you did, however, that didn't translate over to what we received.
Well, it was not just, well, we had a panel of four individuals, um, that put everything together and make sure that they make their recommendation based on what was presented to us as a package.
Okay.
Whereas yourself, you're being, you're, they are standing in front of you selling themselves.
Right.
So, it's, that, that was a difference.
That's a difference.
Yes.
Okay. Very different.
So, the five scores were just off the package?
Mm-hmm. Anything from this side of the, uh, the commission?
Just the idea of, uh, perhaps taking a short recess rather than tabling this to another meeting, or that idea? It just, there's, there's just, to me, you know, some groups are talking about doing events or that aren't necessarily specific to this city.
To this city.
And then to me, it's just something that's, there's, there's some things that stick out to me that really need the funding directly.
Right.
You know, hot meals for seniors, you know, I mean, it's like, that's just.
I'm with you, yeah.
Basic human rights stuff.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would ask, if a recess is proposed, what would happen during the recess?
We couldn't.
Because it's not allowed.
Exactly, that's, that's, I was about to ask the same.
So, we just have to say everything out. So, well, I think off the top that if it's not specific to North Miami, I would take that out.
Okay, which one did you, would you, did you notate as to not being specific to North Miami?
Um, well, the Florida Immigrant Coalition seemed to be not specific to North Miami. I mean, I can, rather than go that way, I could say that I feel really strongly about, um, several of them, as far as, you know.
Right, but I think by identifying.
Like, why, like, I, I question why, you know, why if Florida Immigrant Coalition that says maybe twenty percent, but that's a guess of a number of who they serve in North Miami, they, they're asking for ten, they, they're getting a recommendation of ten, but then you have Meals for Senior Citizens, that's just like such a crucially vital thing, and it's just inexplicably eight.
Eight.
Well, it's not, I, I don't know, it's been explained what it was based off, it was based off of the packet, so, my staff can only base it off of that. So, if they're missing something or whatever, that, that's what stat, well, that's what the panel chose to give them eight, that's the reason why. So, you know, they didn't get, again, the benefit of hearing this, so, that could change it. So, I think the reason why I suggest that maybe we, we identify the organizations that, you know, you may, or anyone may feel that is not mostly dedicated to North Miami, then we can start seeing whether or not you feel, anyone feels it's appropriate to maybe, uh, lower the recommended amount and allocate the, you know, those funds to maybe other organizations that may not have gotten anything, or they need more.
Organizations that got nothing.
Exactly, that, that could be fine too, so, um, if everyone, I mean.
Because I would like to see some of the, that aren't recommending funding, I would like to see them, you know, give them a, give them a chance.
Okay, so then, I'm, I'm.
The other, the reason I asked each one of you how much you got last year was to see, if you got three thousand dollars and you did all of that with three thousand dollars, um, great. So, if we could then give someone else an opportunity and give them three thousand dollars, and they can now do great with three thousand dollars.
Right.
Then, and maybe you not get the full amount that staff was recommending, then, you know.
No, that's logic, I, I, I understand the point, so, I guess, if, if we're going down the list, um, the, the only one that the, the commission has brought up as to identify, from number one to fifteen, is Florida Immigrant Coalition, not for any reason, but that's what was brought up, they're number two. If they were saying here that it's ten thousand, then I guess, uh, you know, I guess I'd have to turn to you and ask, what do you feel they're, they, they need to be lowered down to, or taken away to get to these other organizations?
I, I've been to. For your consideration, um, I, I agree with everything you just said, I would like to distribute to more organizations. Um, you, when you've got a cut from somebody, it's, for example, the.
It's hard.
Um.
It is, this, but we have, I think that's why we have to go one by one.
That's why I had to ask.
So, if we're saying, if we're saying that Florida Immigrant, and I hate to cut you off, Bob, if we're saying that Florida Immigrant Coalition, I keep, I keep having.
So, if we're going one by one, let's start with the Haitian Neighborhood Center.
Well.
Let's start from the top.
Right, which, no, we were fine, but no one said there's no objection as to whether or not.
Okay, so therefore, this is automatically.
So, we're saying, let, let's, let's keep, let's keep them at ten thousand.
Okay.
Let's identify any of the organizations. Yes, sir.
I would take the organizations that have been allocated nothing, decide what you'd like to allocate to them, and that determines what, but that then would tell you what your starting point is for cutting.
Okay, okay.
If you try to cut in advance, you would, you may be unsuccessful.
That's a good idea, Bob. So, then what do we feel is, uh, I, I've heard in the past that, let's say the minimum here that staff felt, let's say that, that someone asked for is, let's say, number thirteen, uh, was the two thousand dollars, it looked like, you know, do we want to make two thousand dollars the, the minimum?
Yes.
Okay?
That'd be my recommendation.
That we, that we can allocate, okay? And so, we're identifying, uh, item number two, applicant number two, um, as one of the applicants where may or may not, uh, you know, be fully, um, you know, providing up most of their services in North Miami, is there another organization? Start after number two?
For cutting?
Yes, for reducing?
Yeah, the, the one I would, and here's the, my reasoning, I'm, I'm trying to find the, the, the firm.
It's a site number two.
There would be one second.
Sure.
This, yeah, the, the Communities United, I think, does a wonderful job, but it's a, it's a South Florida thing. North Miami, we, tonight just ended, maybe, the first of a series of sustainability town hall meetings that's taking place throughout the city of North Miami. So, there's a, there's a, a new effort in town, I mean, we've got a, you know, I've seen on the Flood Plane Management Committee, and we've got a whole new initiative on how we educate people on a lot of the same stuff that you're doing, because we're in a flood, we're, we're where we are, I mean, you know, we're, we're on the coast, and we're in flood, a flooded area. So, we're doing a lot, the city's doing a lot of things down that road. The, this, this, there's outreach now to educate the residents on how they need to participate in their own survival in this whole thing at some point. Um, so I, with all due respect, I think that's a place to cut, because
Okay.
we, we provide a lot of that service for our city.
Okay.
And this particular organization, we're a pretty small piece of the whole pie.
I get you, that, I get you, okay, so we're identi, we've identified applicant number two, applicant number ten, and is there another applicant that anyone would like, the commission, that would like to bring to the?
To cut from?
Or to redistribute?
Redistribute from.
What about Expert Resources and Community Center?
Experts Resources and the Community Center, that was, what applicant was, oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I remember that one. Okay.
I think we, we also provide this type of service.
Okay. Okay, so that's another one, so that's the third one.
Again, for, um, for the, um, funding, for these funds to be allocated?
Oh, it's ninety thousand dollars the most.
Marie?
Oh, sorry.
What, are, are the deadline, because I know that this has to now go, what, go to, uh, City Council. Um, so they, the City Council then has how long before the deadline for the funds to be allocated to the nonprofits?
Six thousand dollars.
By the time City Council adopt it, we just, we have to now to go to the stage of sending the list to HUD and start generating agreement in time for them to have their purchase order by January.
January.
The first quarter, starting January.
So, right now, if, uh, if we're going by the three, the three, um, organizations that have been identified for reduction, right now, we're, and we're saying the two thousand dollars is, I mean, we, we're not, we have fi- five more, we need the ten thousand dollars, we're not going to get that. But we could redistribute six thousand dollars, and each of those organizations would get a little bit over a thousand dollars, the ones that are at zero. That's if we take, if, if we reduce, uh, number two, number four, and number ten by two thousand dollars. I'm choosing a random two thousand dollars is what we're reducing to make, to get fundings, to, to try to redistribute either to the ones that are zero, or to any other organization that anyone feels like needs to be bumped up. Essentially, right now, I think we should focus on not, if everyone feels like everyone should get something, then right now, we have six thousand dollars to redistribute amongst these five zeros. Is there's any other organization that anyone feels that?
I would think, the Wellness Fairs, the monthly, um, again, they got three thousand last year. Um, look at all the work that they did, they requested twenty, staff is recommending eight.
Which number is that, number nine? Is that who you're talking about, you said Wellness?
Um, yes, the month, uh, Mud Wellness.
MJD Wellness?
Monthly Health and Wellness Fairs Challenger.
Number eight.
That's the project.
Oh, yeah, MJD. Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, okay, number nine, organization number nine, okay?
Which one is?
That's MJD Wellness, that's the one that does the monthly health fair, that's what it says in our applicant number nine. So, right now, we have, we have reduced, uh, number two, number four, number nine, and number ten. And if, if we reduce it by two thousand each, we now have eight thousand dollars to redistribute amongst the, um, the zeros or add to anyone else.
Jason, give me this number.
Yes, sir. Alright, so number two? Applicant number four, applicant number nine, and applicant number ten. So, we can either choose to reduce by equal amounts for those applicants, or, you know, we can take out more than two thousand, reduce by more than two thousand each. I'm only choosing two thousand, because it was a random number that we all said, eh, two thousand is.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
It's outside a legal issue, but.
Is there?
Uh, no, I, I just have a comment that's not a legal point.
Okay.
Uh, and the point is that, um, even though you've identified a particular funding amount, I mean, that may not be translatable to an actual, actual benefit to the organization, like, if they're trying to fund a person, um, two thousand dollars may not be able to fund the person, they may not able to use that fund for something that you think it might be used for.
Okay.
So, it might be worthwhile to ask an organization, if we funded you at two thousand dollars, what would you be able to use that money for?
Right.
So, you have some idea of whether it's a worthwhile cut, for example, if, if you're taking from an organization that has a staff person identified, that costs ten thousand dollars, and you're reducing them to eight, what impact does that have on that organization? So, I'm just saying.
Also.
I know, I know, you just complicated the matters by a level more. I hear what you're saying.
And just to add that, you know, we're, we're kind of coming from a what would you cut? You know, like, like what, where would you start cutting from, rather than what sticks out as the two or three organizations that really, really need the funding? Like, the, uh, reading program was very specific, seventeen thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars is what they need, and that is so crucial to our city, to, you know, this is about the proactive involvement in children's lives. I would like to see that fully funded, I just, I'm not huge on hearing nonprofits saying, oh, well, we throw events, and we do education, and we give out food, it's like, you know, I want to, I want to see, like, the, 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 the Hot Meals for Seniors fully funded, I want to see the reading program fully funded, because that's stuff that really affects our city in a real way, not sort of while we're throwing events.
Right, so we have ninety thousand dollars, so I'm challenging everyone on the commission who's challenging what staff has recommended to help me get us to the goal line here. So, I hear, I hear that you would like to fund them, but where's the seven thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars? Where are we going to reduce that from, so that we can get them fully funded, as you're suggesting?
What I was suggesting is.
If I may, I, I need to, where are you suggesting?
I would be more radical in the list that you're suggesting to cut from, and some more.
Okay, okay.
Um, I, I mean, you know, I, not to go back to number two, but number two says, you know, a, a guesstimate of twenty percent of the people they serve are North Miami residents. To me, that's like a two thousand dollar rather than a ten thousand dollar.
Okay, so is anyone, is, uh, is there anyone else in the commission that's in agreement with, uh, reducing applicant number two down to two thousand dollars?
Applicant number two down to two thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Yes, uh, you.
I, I.
I mean, just as an, as an example of what, you know, for me, you know, I, it's hard for me to say, I want to take away from this, and take away from this, and take away from this, so I know we're working from the bottom up, but maybe also working from the top down? You know, what are the really priceless things that we can't take away from? And hot meals.
Uh, uh, yeah.
Children reading.
We agree, Howard.
I'm just saying. So, I've tried to, I've tried to do the math a few times.
So, wh- what has that resulted in?
Um.
Any conclusions?
I gotta say, you know, initially, when I came.
So, then what are you, what are you proposing, man? You, I, we need to get to a number, so.
Um, I was initially going to go with that, you know, staff has done this, done the great work, and so, just, you know, we go with staff's recommendations. However.
Right.
Again, after hearing the others, as, as you said, it's just, it's really not fair.
So, what about the idea, okay, so that we said about the, the not specifically, um, North Miami?
Yes.
Then cut from there.
That should be.
Okay, so then, what are the, what, uh, perhaps to say what of these groups have services that are provided by the city anyway? And cut from that?
I'm not going to recall all fifteen at this time. That, that's why I went the other way, because obviously, there might have been, like, stickers in people's head that, okay, maybe that one isn't covering, but I'm pretty sure the city offers some level of everything that everyone's offering, what percentage, I don't know. So, we can, uh, so that we can switch gears and try to identify the ones that, I guess, the, the count, the, the, the commission feels are most critical in fully funding. So, the one, the two I heard were the, uh, the Russell Life Skills, applicant number three, is, I'm hearing is, needs to be, it'd be nice if they were fully funded. And I'm also hearing, I heard the.
Senior citizens.
Senior citizens, which is applicant, which, where am I, why am I? Oh, number eight. So, if we go that approach, let's try to, with, you know.
Give them the ten.
See, so we're saying, so we, we're negative, uh, negative seventy-one, ninety, let's just say eight K. So now, so that means we're around ten thousand dollars is where we, let's first try to get these fully funded, if that's what the commission would like. How do we, where do we find these ten thousand dollars? Where's, you're saying to reduce from a portion of it from number two, applicant number two?
Two, four.
Two, we said two, four, nine, and ten, are those, are we still identifying as those as the ones that we, we?
I think ten you can further reduce.
Okay, so let's, the, oh, let's, so let's, let's, let's focus on those four.
I concur with that.
Okay, let's focus on those four then, so, it's tough, it's tough, it's not easy. So, then let's say, out of the ten thousand dollars that we had, um, initially, staff initially recommended for number two, how much would we, would, uh, we reduce it by? I previously heard.
Reduce it by eight?
By eight thousand, okay, that's what I heard, I remember, okay? And now we need to find another two thousand dollars, so let's say, in number four, applicant number four that we're, that's being reduced instead of allocating the full ten thousand that they asked for, what's being, uh, how do we, what do we reduce from there? Anyone want to make a suggestion? Anyone want to make a suggestion? The easy answer would be two thousand and then you'd cover these other two applicants.
Right.
Okay. Okay. So a number, it looks like we're reducing uh so far, no applicant number two is getting reduced by eight thousand dollars. In order to fully fund applicant number three, so it's rough, you know, this is a couple hundred dol- eight hundred so dollars there, eight, ten. Left, whatever, leave that floating. Um we're reducing applicant number four by two thousand dollars. And applicant number eight is being increased by two thousand dollars.
Correct.
And are there any other programs besides uh number three and number? Eight, I'm sorry, number three and number, what was the other one we started? I can't, oh, number eight, yeah, number three, number eight, are there any other programs would we like to consider fully funding? About another program, would we would consider increasing their funding more than what's being allocated? Well, we'd have, we we could, we could try and get it from someone else after from I from from number nine and number ten.
I mean, from what I heard from the seniors with the meals, it's it's. I would like to see that.
They can only, we can only fund them two dol- we can only fund them, they're capped at ten thousand.
Okay.
So we've gotten them their ten thousand. Based on your recommendations, so. Are there any other programs that we'd like to fully fund? Are there any other programs that we'd like to increase their funding, who's already got an allocation?
Other than those that the that were zero funded.
The well, now I'm going, that was my, that's my third question, are there any are there any applications and any zero allocated dollars? I'm s- I'm sorry, any applications that got allocated nothing that we'd like to seek funding from other? Another source either from number nine or number ten?
Uh twelve and thirteen.
Twelve and thirteen have been identified, so we're gonna try to see how we can get number twelve and number thirteen.
Ten, fourteen.
And fifteen.
And fourteen and fif- so it's for fourteen and fifteen, so essentially.
All of them.
All of them. Uh we didn't say ten, ten was some, anyone said ten? Uh I'm sorry, is it ten or eleven? No, eleven, I'm sorry, so eleven through fifteen, we're trying to get funding for some type of funding.
I was saying twelve through fifteen.
Twelve through fifteen, well, I'm hearing uh. Eleven through fifteen, you want eleven through fifteen or or is twelve? Eleven left. Does anybody have any issues with eleven receiving funds? Leaving no funds, okay?
Is that the U T U?
Yes, okay, so eleven will remain at zero. And now we're gonna try to challenge ourselves to seek funding from twelve to fifteen, which is four applicants. These four applicants who were initially zero, so now we need to reduce, again, previously we said number nine and ten.
Everybody else, everybody.
If we can get two for everyone.
Take two from every, take two from all of them except.
What is your total on ten?
Say it again?
What's the total?
The total?
For ten.
For ten, right now, we have eight thousand for ten total. That's the most they've alloc- allocated, we haven't reduced them yet. Or number nine, which we're saying that you'd like to reduce, so. If we were to re- let's say entertain a reduction from number nine and ten.
I think you could take ten to two or three.
Take number ten, let's let's give him the high, so we'll give him three, so let's say we have uh we've uh we're taking out three. I'm s- what, uh no, wait, three, fi- I'm sorry, I'm sorry, number, say it again, Bob.
We're taking out five.
We're taking out five.
Taking out five.
To number, yeah, you're right, you're right.
Right.
Right, we're down to five, yeah. We're removing five thousand dollars of allocation from number ten, so now they will be allocated three thousand dollars.
Instead of the eight thousand.
Instead of the eight thousand?
That would be three.
And if we were to say, so we got five, so we're up five grand here, guys. And then number nine, would is there any reduction that you'd like to happen to number nine still, M J Wellness, M J D Wellness and Community?
Yeah.
Okay, if we were to take out, let's say, three thousand from them. I'm just throwing it out there and then we can give, we can spread out two thousand each to the the twelve through number thirteen, twelve to fifteen.
Yes.
Okay, so I think, let me write that down before I forget, and then I'm gonna read to staff out and hopefully the numbers add up. And we're gonna take out.
Think you got it.
We took out three from number nine, is that, yeah? Alright. Okay, so. Let me double check my math here.
Do you think your numbers are correct? Do you think you're up to speed on where we are right now?
Yeah, oh, I thought you were talking about, I'm I'm getting up to speed.
These are two thousand.
Alright, I think I got it, okay, so from what I believe. Okay.
Go for it.
Alright, here I go. I'm nervous, alright, now we, alright, we're fully funding number uh three, so number three is now seventeen. I should go in order, shouldn't I?
Yes.
I should go in order, so we know, we know number one and we said number. Oh, boy.
Number one was fully funded.
Yeah, number one was fully funded, yeah, we said we're good, number number two is the one that we reduced by to two thousand dollars, correct, and we got the eight thou- yes. Then we're your number three, we're fully funding at seventeen one ninety. Uh four. I think we re- we reduced it by two thousand dollars.
Correct.
So that's now eight thousand. Uh five remains the same, six same, seven same. Eight, we've increased it and we've we're now fully funding it to ten thousand dollars.
The North Miami Foundation, yes.
Yep, uh number nine, we have reduced it by three thousand, so now it's at a total of five thousand allocation.
Jason, read five, six and seven to me again.
Yes, sir, no problem, Bob. They all stayed the same, that's why I can do it so fast. Alright. You good, Bob? Okay, uh let me go back to number eight so I can catch my thing, so we're gonna, we're we're keeping number eight at ten thousand, I'm sorry, we're increasing it to ten thousand. Uh number nine is being reduced down to five thousand. Number ten has been reduced down to three thousand. Number eleven had remained the same, zero. Number twelve, thirteen, fourteen and fifteen are all two thousand, now there will be a few thou- a couple hundred dollars, I think. Remain, there should be seven, should be eight, ten. Eight hundred and ten dollars floating around somewhere, I think. Uh Debbie, you doing the math on that?
Alright, let's see what uh.
Four years.
That's not bad.
I was, I don't know, I think, I didn't check the balance. I did, I got it in my head. It should be like eight hundred and ten dollars.
Yeah, I think it is eight ten.
Okay. What happens, count three.
Can I make a recommendation?
One second, Bob.
Number four and five, make them both nine.
Four and five, now we're changing this number?
We got it, we got it, we were about to, we're about to add it all up, but.
Wait, it should be the same.
I mean, I'm not changing the total.
It's, yeah, it's a, it's a wash, it's a change.
Instead of eight and ten, I'd like to make them nine and nine.
Nine and nine.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Debbie, sorry about that.
That's alright.
Okay. Bob, just side swipe somebody else.
There was five and five and six.
Which which number was that? What number was that? What number? It's four and five, guys?
I'm sorry, Debbie, what what was?
It's four and five, they were nine thousand each?
Yes, they're being changed now to nine thousand each, yes. Then we gotta decide what we do with the eight hundred and ten bucks, which we could choose to give it to number eleven, even though he's not here and everybody gets a piece of the pie. We have, we should, we should have around eight hundred and ten dollars remaining. So we could choose to, you know, allocate it anywhere, we could give it to number eleven, who has, he's the only nonprofit that was not.
Sure.
We could give it to that organization.
Can we give it to someone that requests?
That raises a question I I raised before, which can we do something with it?
You're right, no, you're right, you're right.
A dilemma here where, you know.
He doesn't have to take. Yeah, they don't have to, I mean, I don't know anyone in this room who wouldn't take anything, who who wouldn't take whatever was allocated, so. But you do bring up a good point. So are we uh Debbie, is that adding up?
Uh.
Should I redo it? That's fine, that's fine, that's okay, we changed it at the last minute, so like, I let me see if I can run through it real quick and see what I get as well. There's nothing wrong with cross checking or impromptu math.
Eighty nine, one seventy.
Eighty nine. Nine seventy.
One.
Including the eight ten.
Yeah, the eight ten, you said, you guys did say eight ten was going to number eleven, right?
Is that we're gonna assign to eleven, we agree with that? Eight ten, yes, let's go ahead and decide number eleven, eight ten.
It's a perfect eighty thousand if you do that. Yep.
And let me add that to it and we got ninety on the money.
Yep, because once I do that and then we add the eight ten, that gives us.
So everybody's a winner.
Well. I don't know.
Eight, no.
Well, so there's so, there's some people who got, who got reduced, but I. I think, yeah, we, I think we got it, I think we got it. Alright, let me uh go ahead and spit it for one more time for the record, if I may.
Start at the top and.
Yes, sir, I will, so here we go, number, starting with number one in numerical order, we have ten thousand dollars. We have two thousand dollars, we have seventeen one ninety, we have nine thousand. Nine thousand, eight thousand, eight thousand, ten thousand. Five thousand, three thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars, two thousand. Two thousand, two thousand and two thousand. That was for the record. I didn't, I didn't hear anybody say.
I'll second that.
Debbie, that is your numbers and they add up to the right number?
Does our math have to be right before we to vote on it?
Her calculations broke.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a slow calculator.
It's all good.
It's not operator error or anything.
She's leaving out the zeros, that's why, that's probably why.
That's right.
Leave out the zeros, it's much faster. Just gotta know your decimals, that's gonna complicate things. You still not get it, Debbie?
Yeah, I got it.
You got it? Okay.
You got the right number?
No, I just wanna make sure that we're all in the same phase, we're good, okay?
Then I'd like to make a motion to accept those numbers.
I'll second it.
Yeah, the second, um I guess all those in favor, say aye, aye, all those opposed? Alright, is, am I allowed to say anything else on the matter? I mean, I know we voted on it.
Sure.
So as you all can see, in you know, in the audience, it's not easy, uh I could tell you, I've been on the board for a while and we haven't gone through and reallocated stuff. But every now and then, I guess it's good to, I mean, I don't know if it's good or bad, but hopefully all the applicants understand. Um your stories were very good, I think all the work that everyone's putting, you know, putting forth is definitely recognized. And we hope that, you know, whoever didn't get the amount that they were hoping to get, that they, you know, keep pushing forward, work hard. And hopefully they can come back with results next year, that you can come upon and speak upon and, you know, reiterate and stress to us how important your. Uh you know, specific organization is to the community and the impact that you have, so we do definitely appreciate all the efforts. And uh keep pushing forward, so we thank you all very much. That said, um move on to the uh. The next thing, communi- uh committee reports, do we have any committee reports, staff? No?
No, sir.
Alright, do we have any old business?
No, sir.
Any new business?
No, sir.
Alright, this is where Kevin usually likes talking about dates of the next planning commission. Are there any dates, uh Marlene, have you, have they staff identified a date for the next commission meeting?
Um according to our calendar, our next meeting is December the third, um and we're. Expecting to meet as planned.
Right.
December the third.
And we do have, and uh Marie just reminded me of something very important, we'd like to introduce a new uh director.
Director?
Yes, um.
Housing?
Yes, as you may already know, uh well, y'all been used to housing being under CPND.
Yeah.
I would like to allow me to formally introduce the Housing and Social Services Director, Albert Brazil.
Alright, thank you, hello, welcome to our community.
And Karen Frederick, who's the administrator, who you probably will see more of the part of the planning commission as well.
Alright, welcome, thank you, thank you all for, you know, another thing I do wanna thank you very much for the effort that you put forth every single year. I know you hear a lot of the same questions and but I think it's good to educate, it's good to hear the questions so that not only, I think, the community hears on TV. But also for the rest of the board, the new members, to hear how it's evaluated and stuff like that, it's not easy, it's never easy, but we do appreciate the effort.
What the questions that we're asking and by no, no way is it like a reflection of. A fantastic job that you haven't done, it's it's really difficult.
We are used to that every year.
Awesome, well, thank you very much, alright, so with that said, if anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Or anyone to second that?
I guess I'll second it since, um that's my benediction of being here.
Alright, alright, um I guess, uh do I have to call a vote to that or do I just say uh meeting adjourned?
Welcome aboard, let me, before you sound the gavel. We've done this, we've done this a number of times and I thought this process went very well tonight.